All right. Thank you for coming, everybody. We will call the Belvidere City Council Regular Meeting of September 3rd, 2024 to order. If the clerk will help me with the roll call, please.
Albertini?
Here.
Brereton?
Here.
Flurry?
Here.
Frank?
Here.
Freeman?
Here.
Gramkowski?
Here.
McGee? McGee is absent. Mulhall? Mulhall's absent. Stevens? And Stevens is absent. Six present?
Okay, if you'll please join me and stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by the invocation.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Dear Lord, we thank you for our country, our community, our families, and our freedom. Lord, we thank you for our current military service members and for the men and women veterans who have served and sacrificed throughout our nation's history. We pray that you bless them and their families for their heroic service. We thank you for our police and fire paramedic first responders in our community and throughout our country who bravely serve our citizens and respond no matter what. We pray for their well-being and ask that you be with them and their loved ones as they continue to serve our communities. Tonight, we pray for guidance and that you give each of us patience, compassion, understanding, wisdom, strength, and courage as we conduct our city's business here this evening. We pray for these things, in Christ's name, amen. All right, we have registered under public comment, one individual, Jim McCann Jr., Mr. McCann. Good evening.
Good evening, Jim.
Good evening. If you'd just state your name for the record, please.
Good evening. My name is Jim McCann Jr. I was here two weeks ago to speak about the mayor and the department heads. I did not have notes that night. I have notes tonight. I omitted one very important thing, so I'd like to start by saying that. The mayor and his department heads and the aldermen that have supported him are writing a chapter in Belvidere's history there's nothing to compare it to. There may be nothing in the future, only time will tell. I'm a big fan of old sayings. They're old for a reason. One old saying is, "Do not be distracted by criticism." Some people, the only taste of success they will ever have is when they take a bite out I've never heard any of the alderpeople give the mayor credit for anything. If he doesn't deserve credit for what he's accomplished already, I would like to see who does deserve it. Shame on all the aldermen for that. Alderwoman Freeman, you said you never said that you supported the tax increase, yet on December 11th, you gave several reasons why the city needs more money: fire and police pensions, city contracts, material for city workers, and a few more. Any reasonable person who listened to you would have assumed you were in favor of Alderman Snow's motion, although you were not here the night it was voted on. You have appointed yourself the official spokesperson for the city council. Your speeches are punctuated with snide remarks and innuendos. Your behavior at these meetings is outrageous. I've heard you drop the F-bomb. I've heard you say you did not care if Stellantis stayed or not. You denied saying that, but you did. And as a matter of fact, you were more concerned with the cost of a food license for the food truck operators than you were if Stellantis stayed open. I've heard you call the mayor and three of your colleagues hypocrites. They did something, I might add, you have no knowledge of. They took the high road and did not respond. I've seen you interrupt the mayor while he was making a presentation to a judge. You leave professionalism and decency in your car when you come into these meetings. You and the other part-time aldermen, also from the 5th Ward, picked up your marbles, stood up, and walked out while the meeting was still in session. In one of your speeches, you sarcastically mentioned the finance director, who you said is well-paid. In fact, compared to other people in her position, she is underpaid. She is also a grant writer, which is a separate job in itself, and she is not paid for that. I think, my opinion, she should be the highest-paid person in Belvidere. Alderman Gramkowski and Alderman Albertini have attended just short twice as many meetings as you have, and yet you make the same money they do. Talk about somebody that is well-paid. Is this a great country or what? You have labeled the mayor a bully simply because he pointed out that Alderman Snow's option was the most expensive option and not necessary. He also told Alderman Flurry he was out of order when he wanted to take a survey of the people who were in the audience. Because someone might have a different opinion than you does not make them a bully. Alderwoman, you said the mayor would be so busy taking calls from angry citizens about the garbage, he would not have time for anything else. That might be the biggest misstatement since General Custer said, "They look like friendly Indians." Alderman Flurry, there's another old saying, "Never miss a good opportunity to keep your mouth shut." All of the council members, I thought all of the council members, knew what the three sacred cows of politics were. The people who voted for the 17.33% increase did not know. They are: Never talk about reducing Medicare, does not apply to the council; Never talk about reducing Social Security, does not apply to the council; and Never talk about raising property taxes, does apply to the council. With a room full of people here to oppose the increase, with the exception of three ladies who spoke on behalf of the library, you tried to explain to them that it only came to $8 a month. When they laughed at you, you raised your voice and yelled, "All right, we get it." I looked at my computer at home and said, "Goodbye, Alderman." When a politician angers the voters, the story rarely, if ever, has a happy ending for that person. After being around politics for six decades, I would say the odds of you, Alderman Albertini, or Alderwoman Mulhall getting re-elected are about the same as me growing a full head of hair by Election Day. At one council meeting, the alderman took up the issue of paying council members for meetings that they were not at. To no one's surprise, they voted to continue to have the Fox Guard the Chicken Coop. The next morning, at 9:00 a.m., I called the election board in Springfield. I had a nice discussion with a man there. The reason I called was to see if this issue, you must be present to be paid, could be put on the April ballot as a referendum. He said unfortunately, it did not meet the requirements for a referendum. We both agreed, there are always two ways to skin a cat. This was the easy way. Now I move on to the hard way. I'm going to call Tricia Smith's office and ask for a meeting. I'm going to explain what is occurring and ask her office to investigate the Belvidere City Council. When I lived in Chicago, I knew a guy who was a prominent defense attorney. He was frequently on television. His specialty was mob-related people. He told me one time, "Jim, there are two charges you don't want to get. You don't want to be charged under the RICO Act or ghost payrolling." And the RICO Act, for anybody that doesn't know, it's racketeer-influenced corrupt organization. He said the state or the feds have twice the proof they need when they bring the charges. He said he's had clients who were charged with ghost payrolling ask him, "Do you think I will go to jail?" He said, "I tell them, the question isn't whether or not you're going to go to jail. The question is, am I going to be able to mitigate the sentence you're going to get?" I asked him, "What is your definition of ghost payrolling?" He said, "Accepting compensation for work or services that were never done." The three council members that are the most egregious at this, I have an option I will discuss with you after the meeting. There's an old saying, "It's not how much you leave to your kids, but rather how much you leave in your kids. If you leave enough in them, they will not spend what you left to them. If you don't leave enough in them, they will blow through everything you left to them." I would like to take this opportunity to thank my parents for instilling in my sister and myself at a very young age to always do the right thing. It's not always easy to do, and it's never popular, but you sleep much better if you do it. Alderman Brereton, you cast two votes that have ensured your induction into the Aldermanic Hall of Shame. After a five-meeting hiatus, which you accepted full payment for, you dropped in for a meeting. That was the night the mayor proposed a raise for the financial director. You voted no because it was not the right time. The second vote that ensured your induction was the night you voted to abstain on a vote to accept an anonymous $10,000 donation to the police department. Really? You called Alderman Albertini out for abstaining on the garbage vote. Karma. Karma's a great thing. It comes back to bite you where the sun doesn't shine. The only problem is people say it takes too long for it to happen. Well, in this case, it happened as quick as it could. The people who voted against being present to get paid are the same people who voted against Mayor Peterson being appointed to the city council, and they're the same people that are now in the spotlight, and it's a light you don't want to be in. There's an old adage, "Never give a microphone to a preacher or an Irishman," and now you know why. Thank you.
All right, item four, approval of the minutes. We have item A, approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of the Belvidere City Council dated August 19th, 2024, as presented in your packets. If I could have a motion to approve them. Motion by Alderwoman Frank and second by Alderman Flurry. Thank you both. Any corrections, any errors, anything that needs to be pointed out? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And if there's any opposed? Motion passed, thank you. Item five, public hearing, we have none this evening. Item six, special messages and proclamations. Under item A, we have R1 here tonight for presentation. Michael Dunn is here. Michael, this is for the Livable Communities Initiative presentation, and Sidney is with you.
I'm Sidney.
Jason, nice to see you again. So anyhow, Michael, I want to thank you for coming here this evening and bringing Sidney and Jason, so I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, everyone. Thanks for having us. We will be quick tonight, but happy to answer questions. We're here tonight to really ask all of you for your help. It's an ask in that we have money that's budgeted to invest in a neighborhood in Boone and Winnebago County, and the people that ask for that money are neighborhood associations or neighborhood groups or any nonprofit that's trying to restore a neighborhood. And so we're meeting with a number of city councils in the two-county area to, again, advocate for this program and ask all of you to reach out to your various neighborhood groups to see if they have interest in it. And for Belvidere, it goes back to, I think, the land bank's first project. And the land bank's first project ever was at 1,000 Nettie. And we looked at 1,000 Nettie, we saw what a success it was, and we realized that, you know, we can combine the land bank funding source with what you all own, which I've briefed all of you on multiple times, which is the MPO, the Metropolitan Planning Organization, that gets a lot of federal money. And we can then work with some other groups, you know, Midland State's Bank is one, the Building Trades Council of Northern Illinois is another, and take their investment and combine it all into a grant that we can give to a neighborhood group to not only fix maybe a few houses, but to go in and look at sidewalks, look at alleys, look at street lighting, and determine how can we go into one block of one city, make an investment in there using our federal money and our land bank money, and see what that artificial investment does to private sector investment coming in and following. What private sector investment occurs around that city block, and to see, using a lot of data resources, how certain metrics, how certain demographics change because of that investment. And so I'll turn it over to Sidney and Jason to give you a little bit more detail. But the ask tonight really isn't asking any of you for money, it's asking you to get the word out on this program, work with the neighborhood groups to see if they think they might have a good project for it, and then we can give money to them. And so with that, Sidney, Jason, who's next? I'll let Jason go, and again, thank you for hearing us out tonight, I really appreciate it.
Thank you. So I'll briefly just discuss our methodology, and as you'll see in the slides, we're really focused on middle neighborhoods for really three critical reasons. Number one is that that's where most people live, these neighborhoods that maybe don't have all the amenities of a thriving place but aren't disinvested either. They have a lot of great assets. Traditionally, though, a lot of federal funding has focused on disinvested neighborhoods that might take several decades to really get into rebound. And so we believe that by focusing on middle neighborhoods, we can get to recovery quicker but also have a bigger bang for the buck. If you see that kind of tipping point visualization, our goal is to find those middle neighborhoods that are at that tipping point brink between, they could go either way. It could kind of fall down into decline, or it could tip up and accelerate recovery, and we want to find it at that critical moment before it declines to help it get into a recovery path with that funding. And so I won't go into all the details of the data analysis, but we have included for you the data indicators that we looked at to identify the middle neighborhoods within this region, and want to, at least, starting off for this pilot round of funding, really focus on those neighborhoods and see what type of results we can get from that approach.
So I'm here to kind of give an overview about our goal of what we're trying to do with this program. So this is an initiative that isn't unique to our region. This is something that has been occurring all over the country for the past two decades. It was launched, and there's livability framework that you see in here. It was really an initiative by the federal government through the Housing and Urban Development Department of Transportation, as well as the Environmental Protection Agency, came together to form these sustainability plans. They provided a lot of funding to launch these initiatives, and we've seen success. One of the few of them that are decades-long and have been very successful in trying to accomplish this are Atlanta, but even closer down in St. Louis, has a program that has been really instrumental in improving some of their neighborhoods. A lot of the focus of these, while it touches on a variety of different things in that livability framework, it really focuses a lot on transportation and transportation investments, as well as community amenities. Those are kind of the focus areas that we really want to implement. But it comes down to making sure that we are creating plans that the neighborhoods want. And so that's why we're doing a two-phased approach to our program. The first is to provide technical assistance. This funding is coming out of our Metropolitan Planning Organization's funding, annual funding that we get from the federal and state government, to provide technical assistance hours to these neighborhoods to create action plans. So identifying what are the elements that you really want to see in your neighborhood? Is it maybe improved sidewalks, additional lighting? Could it be a community garden? Things of that nature that can really help make the community and kind of improve it as the way the neighborhood would like it. The second is the implementation program. So being able to take that plan, so it doesn't sit on a shelf, and actually implement those items. And that funding, again, comes from federal and state funding that we receive for transportation dollars, as well as, Michael mentioned, some of the land bank and the private partners who would like to see this program be invested in. So through that, as I mentioned, there's a variety of topics and types of projects that can be implemented. I have just an example of some of the implementation projects in here that have occurred throughout the country with these programs. So, for example, community gardens are very popular as a way to maybe address that community aspect, that providing maybe a vacant lot with some utilization. But again, as I mentioned, a lot of them focus in on the transportation side of things. So currently, we are in the initial call for projects, and so we have been doing various presentations to different community organizations in these tipping point neighborhoods or middle neighborhoods that Jason talked about to get the word out. So until September 13th, we are looking for applicants to apply. The application is very simple. It asks basically, "Why would the neighborhood like this project or this technical assistance funding?" It can be anywhere from a nonprofit to local public schools within the neighborhood, as well as religious organizations, charitable organizations, and neighborhood associations. What we're asking those neighborhoods for is just a commitment to give us the forum or the place to be able to hear their thoughts, their voices, and to be able to provide this technical assistance to them. Happy to answer any questions that you may have about the program.
Any questions for Sidney or Jason? Alderwoman Gramkowski?
Yes. Thank you, Mayor. Are the projects, the funding that is going to be awarded to the projects is based on projects, or is there a certain dollar amount for the community to use?
It's based off of the project. So we're focusing on the technical assistance component first, and then once we get this done, we'll move into the implementation phase, and it will really be based off of the project that is being submitted as how much funding is available. We'll have a set amount for transportation funding that we will know probably on an annual basis how much that will be. But aside from that, other projects such as community gardens, even maybe some energy efficiency programs, those may come down to how much is the project and how much funding we have available. A lot of the funding, as I mentioned, is coming from the federal and state that we get on the transportation side, but we are working with partners to be able to support some of those funding that wouldn't be eligible for that transportation. And so that really comes down to our funding partners and where our levels are at that point in time.
If I can, I'm sorry, I should have stayed up there.
Come on up, come back up, Michael. That way, sorry, sorry about that, but that way, people that, you know, have your back to the other audience.
But I just, as a friendly reminder, when Sidney says transportation, that's not just roads, right? That's bike paths, that's sidewalks, so if there's an area where sidewalks need to be rebuilt, transportation, any sort of multimodal effort qualifies under transportation.
Okay. Go ahead.
How do we get the information to these applicants that need to, that want to apply for this?
Sure, yes. So we have a website page, so at r1planning.org/LCI, there is a page that describes the program, a high-level overview, and it also provides my contact information, as well as Mark Hook's contact information, who is kind of handling the outreach to the neighborhood communities directly and walking them through this process to make it as easy for them to apply as possible.
Okay, that answer your question. Alderwoman Frank?
Yeah, I have some community, like Logan Avenue would be a good place, or Oak Street by the St. Joseph Hospital, I'm thinking some of those, but we have to reach out to them, so they apply.
Okay, thank you. Alderwoman Freeman?
Thank you, Mayor. So is this like one project for one neighborhood, or can like one neighborhood get a garden and another neighborhood get sidewalks, or is it spread out? I mean, you said it's not a one monetary thing, so it's only about the project, so it's just like one project for one neighborhood, right?
Yeah, so how we're starting it out is, this is the pilot test that we're doing, and this, what we're trying to get applications for right now is for the technical assistance to create an action plan for a single neighborhood. We're trying to start off on a smaller level to see what the interest is and kind of do that pilot for it. Eventually, we would like to see additional technical assistance to multiple neighborhoods per year. It will require us to add additional staff capacity, but it's something that we are planning on pursuing. When it comes down to the implementation side, which we're not funding this year and not pursuing this year, it won't be until next year, it will be based off of the applicants we get. So if there is multiple neighborhoods that have had the technical assistance, they can all apply. Depending on the funding level, we might be able to fund multiple projects per year and different types of projects.
Okay, Mr. Anderson?
And just to point out, Belvidere right now is limited to the southeast portion of town, based on the demographics and the makeup of that area. So they're basically talking from Genoa to State, from the river south to US Route 20, is what's been identified for Belvidere for this parameters of this project at this point.
Yeah, and I would add, so there's criteria, as Brent brought up. The criteria is open to interpretation within the selection committee. And the selection committee, to answer your question, Alderwoman, is made up of the mayors and county chairs of the region, plus every private or nonprofit that has also chipped in money. So Commet is looking to fund this, Midland State's Bank, Project First Rate, Building Councils of Illinois, forgetting someone.
Community.
Northern Illinois Community Foundation, thank you. And so the selection committee will take the criteria that Brent identified, look at the applications, and make the best choice. And the other point that I think Sidney hit, just to reemphasize, is if a neighborhood association wants to get what's called implementation dollars, which means actually constructing the project, they first need to get that technical assistance. And so the projects that are awarded the technical assistance are the ones that are set up in the following year to compete for the construction dollars. No city or county will receive a project if the underlying city and county say, "This isn't in conformance with our planning, we don't agree with this." So while we want the neighborhood groups to drive this and bring the ideas and the projects to us as government, we obviously would not award a project to a neighborhood group where that underlying municipality or county says, "Absolutely not," right? So there's that check and balance.
Alderwoman Gramkowski?
Thank you. Brent, can you state where those locations are again, please?
So roughly, it's Genoa on the east, Genoa Road to State Street on the west, to the river to the north, and US Route 20 on the south.
Any other questions? Well, I want to thank you, Michael, Sidney, and Jason for coming here this evening. I know I've said this before, the city of Belvidere belongs to the council of government, and of course, R1 is a big help, and has been a big help. They were always a help with state funding, but now it also includes federal funding. So any of the dollars that we can compete- So any of the dollars that we can compete for with municipalities or with whatever is available, we certainly appreciate having that. When I looked at this program, I had thought about infrastructure, I had thought about sidewalks, I don't know how many miles of sidewalk. Brent Anderson and I hear it, Director Anderson here it all the time. And we certainly have infrastructure needs, not to mention, we have storm sewer flooding issues and what have you. But I always thought that if we could identify with the help of the residents, and they've been here before, I mean, I'm not, I'm not saying anything that residents haven't been down here, and they've identified their particular neighborhood. So I think this is a good, a great program, and hopefully, the priorities will line up with the advocates for the neighborhoods. So thank you all for coming. I appreciate it. Thank you. All right, item seven, approval of expenditures, we have none. Item eight, committee reports and minutes of city officers. A, we have approval of the minutes of the regular committee of the whole, public safety and finance and personnel of dated August 26, 26, 2024 is presented. If I could have a motion to that effect, please. Motion by Alderman Flurry, thank you. And a second by Alderman Albertini, thank you both. Any corrections, any heartburn over the issues that are in front of you? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And item nine, unfinished business, we have none. Item 10, new business, motions forwarded from committee of the whole, public safety, finance, and personnel of August 26, 2024, motions of out of public safety. Chairman Flurry, if you would, please.
Thank you, Mayor. A, motion to accept grant funds from the Illinois Attorney General's Office, organize retail crime program in the amount of $12,000 to be used for the purchase and installation of four Flock Safety Automatic License Plate readers, and to authorize the mayor and finance director to execute any documentation necessary to facilitate the receipt of grant funds.
Okay, we have that motion on the floor out of committee. If there's any discussion, now be the time. Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion on the floor, well, when their name is called, answer aye. Any opposed, nay, as the clerk calls a roll, please?
Albertini?
Aye.
Burton?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Gramkowski?
Aye.
Six in favor?
Motion passed, thank you. Thank you, Chairman Flurry. And moving to the motions out of finance and personnel, Chairwoman Frank, if you would, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Motion to consent to and approve the appointment of Jerry Hoines for alderperson for Ward Two of the city of Belvidere to fill the vacancy created by the resignation of Dan Snow.
Okay, we have that motion out of committee. If there's any questions regarding the motion on the floor, that would be the time. As you know, I had appointed two, and this is the second appointment, and Mr. Hoines had attached a letter of interest from August 5, 2024. And if there's any questions, I'm sure he would be willing to answer them. Okay, motion on the floor. All those in favor of the motion on the floor, well, when their name is called, answer aye. Any opposed, nay, as the clerk calls a roll, please?
Burton?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Nay.
Freeman?
Aye.
Gramkowski?
Nay.
Albertini?
Aye.
Four in favor?
Motion, motion fails. So I will, I believe the statute and the city attorney can clue me in on this one, but I believe the statute allows me to provide two appointments to the city council. If neither of those appointments come through, then it's up to me to make the appointment of one of the two that I have given to you. Both gentlemen, both former Mayor Peterson and Jerry Hoines are, they're both friends of mine. And, but being a friend of the mayors doesn't preclude them from being selected for office. And I've said this before, and we've run into some discussion, and I do think it's political. I think that the first appointment I gave you, Mayor Peterson, as some of the Aldermen said, one of the Aldermen said, certainly qualified, he's a two-term mayor. And very, very intelligent, happens to be a friend of mine. But it shouldn't, it shouldn't exempt him. And I felt that it did. I felt politics had exempted him. Mr. Hoines is a friend of mine. I've known Mr. Hoines, Jerry, for a long time. And certainly, I believe he has the best interests as well for the city of Belvidere at heart. So I will make an appointment. I will not make an appointment this evening, but I will make an appointment. And it is a precarious situation, as I said. I think I've given the council two very qualified individuals and people that have lived in Belvidere all their life, both of them, longer than I've lived here. And so anyhow, we'll move on. We have, next, item C, please. Chairwoman Frank?
Motion to authorize the mayor to execute the Cottingham and Butler Consulting Agreement.
Okay, thank you. And in your packet, last week was a memo dated August 21st, and we had some discussion over that. We have a motion on the floor out of committee. If there's any questions, now would be the time. Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, well, when their name is called, answer aye. Any opposed, nay, as the clerk calls a roll, please?
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
Gramkowski?
Aye.
Albertini?
Aye.
Burton?
Aye.
Six in favor?
Motion passed. And that is all we have on the agenda this evening. If I could have a motion to adjourn, please? Motion by Alderwoman Gramkowski, and a second? Anybody? Alderman Albertini? Thank you both. Nothing further, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? All right, we're adjourned for the record at 6:38 p.m. Thank you, everybody. I appreciate you coming.